Thank you.
You drove all the way up?
Yeah, of course.
Mayor Harris. Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney is now present. Thank you. We have closed session items, please, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one item for closed session this evening. It's Confiscate Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.91. The name of the case is Brand Robachund, Claim Number 0696610146. Thank you.
All right, with that being said, we will adjourn to closed session.
And for the record, there's no public for public comment? Oh, already, thank you.
All right, welcome, everybody. We're going to go ahead and start this meeting this evening. Thank you for your patience. We're a little bit behind, but not too bad. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received prior excuse me, received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, if everybody could please stand for an invocation by Councilmember Wade Kirchner. And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag led by Councilmember Pesquale, if you would mind.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight humbled, humbled that we are given the privilege to live in a country where our voice matters, a country where we have the right to choose the individuals who represent our interests and those of our communities. Tonight, we ask for your guidance and peace over our divided land as we cast our vote for the people who will shape policy of not only our city, but of our nation. Be with our first responders tonight, who are, as always, keeping us safe. Bless these proceedings, and let them glorify not us, but you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Salute the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead on with item number one, which is public communication, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including not items excuse me, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We do have two written requests. First one is by Ms. Christie Macy. If she is here, come on up. You have five minutes.
My name is Christie Macy. Thank you. My name is Christie Macy, and I live at 654 Tabor Avenue in Yuba City. I'm here today to update you on the criminal activity that's occurring at 640 Tabor Avenue. I wanted to apologize to this council for not showing up to the last meeting. I was up all night with the activity that's going on next door. And before coming here, I felt an overwhelming feelings of defeat and anxiety, and so I chose not to come. Councilman Pesquale, excuse me, encouraged me to return here and let you know what's been going on. I came here on September 17th and informed the council of an extensive criminal nuisance activity occurring at 640 Tabor Avenue. It appeared that I had brought the issue to the right place. However, regardless of the conversations that I've had and the promises made, nothing has changed. It has gotten worse, and the residents continue to torment this neighborhood. Since I was here, there have been two separate three-day periods of time in which the residents of 640 Tabor were emptying their waste tanks from the illegal RV that's housing the homeless on the property. This was happening in 100-degree heat, and the smell of human urine and feces was overwhelming. It prevented me and my neighbors from going outside, and I had to leave my house. Large mortars are being set off on top of my house. We report those. My car tires are being flattened. Anybody who comes to my house, their car tires are flattened, and I've had a blowout recently. Large, large amounts of trash are being brought to the property. They're stacking, they're being piled. It's causing roaches, rodents, spiders to come onto my property. My property is very, again, very oddly situated to where there is a lot of exposure to this property. Men are prowling and looking over fences and in windows, approaching my back door, my garage. They would not, they don't respond to any of my inquiries or my dogs barking. They just continue on. I've called Yuba City PD. Dispatch refuses to identify those reports as suspect prowling. They question whether they've made it on my property, as if I've had no reason to call. They respond with officers responding to a noise complaint. As soon as officers leave, they go back to their prowling activity, and they start to shout threats of violence and things that they're going to do, because I've called law enforcement. I've had to leave my own house. I spend half of the time already there because of what's going on and my absolute overwhelmingness of it. Under these terms, I can't call Yuba City PD anymore. I'm not getting the help. It's causing more problems. So, I'm here today because I think this council needs to tell its citizens that this is possible, that an elderly, developmentally-delayed man can live next door to you, be abused by a woman that has a long criminal history, and then run a meth-distributing flop house for three years. I have knocked on every door. I have appealed to every agency. And at this point, these agencies are helping this happen. They're not stopping it. There is, they're not stopping it. I have worked hard. I've paid my bills. I paid my mortgage. I've been an upstanding citizen. And I will still, I have to move. I have to leave my house. I can't in good conscience rent it to anybody. And if I try to sell it, I'm going to substantially lose money. So it just, at this point, I'm letting you know, I think that the citizens of Yuba City should know that this is going on. And moving seems to be the only option to deal with this problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you mind maybe outlining some options we might be able to have in this? This sounds pretty...
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is terrible, to put it any other way. And it's a very tragic and sad circumstance. One of the challenges we have from a purely legal perspective is the state of California has put a lot of laws into place, making it very difficult to move forward. And I think Ms. Macy has faced this in her efforts in order to move forward as well. It takes a lot of hoops, and it takes a lot of time. That being said, there are some options. They are not fast options, but they can resolve this going forward. And it'll take a lot of effort to set it up, a lot of cooperation, but it can be done. The fastest way to get this done is if somebody had a judgment lien against the property and was able to enforce that judgment lien. So that's usually a private citizen that would do that. Now, that can be expensive, but there are groups out there that will enforce judgment liens for a percentage of the lien, so that it doesn't result in any out-of-pocket for the person who's doing the lien. What that would mean, for example, just hypothetically speaking, because I can't give advice to private individuals, is that if Ms. Macy had a judgment lien against the property and were to foreclose on that lien or hire a company to do that for her, she would arguably be in possession of the property, assuming that there's not a mortgage company out there or somebody else with a lien on that property. I believe the city does have a lien on that property, and we have certain rights, but it takes us a couple of years to be able to enforce our lien and foreclose it, just because, again, Sacramento and the state laws, we have an effect. So that's one potential approach. That's the fastest approach from that way. There may be an outside option, and again, I haven't explored this. I'm thinking creatively right now, is if somebody did have a judgment lien and transferred it to the city, so the city could foreclose on the lien and then move forward. I have not looked into that, but that might be another option as well. The city does, cannot legally provide someone money to foreclose on their lien or to enforce private actions. It would be an unlawful gift to public funds. There are restrictions on the city's ability to do that. City can also take certain legal action. For example, there are things like administrative citations. But what happens is you end up citing and citing and citing and citing, and each day is a separate violation. And so you have to get enough violations and do everything and provide a right of appeal and a process. And then you go through the lien process, which we've been doing. And then it goes on the rolls, and then they have to not pay their tax rolls, and then you have to go through foreclosure process. So that can take a while. The other option, I'm down to think, option four now, for those of you who are counting, is that it is possible to go in and get what's called an abatement warrant. And that's where you would first go in and get an inspection warrant. A court, you'd have your attorneys go into a court. The court would look over the evidence that's been provided to date. It would be very helpful if there were people who are willing to do declarations, saying, yes, this is how bad the property is, because courts do listen to neighbors and pictures. And if the city is going in under that, you go out, you do your inspection warrant, and then the city can get what's called an abatement warrant, if necessary, and ordering them to abate the nuisance. They have to be given a reasonable period of time to abate the nuisance. If they don't abate the nuisance or if it's a clear and present threat to human health and safety, then the city can go in, abate the nuisance, and then put a lien against the property. Now, what I've seen is, is that usually cleans it up on a temporary basis. And then the city can only enforce through the lien, which, as you know, it takes a while to go through the lien process and enforcement from that way. I've seen in other jurisdictions where the property just reverts back to the same problem you've had. So you've had some movement forward, but it's not necessarily a permanent solution. There are other options out there. There is something called a health and safety receivership, where the city can, if it can meet certain requirements, depending on the occupants of the house and who owns it, basically hire a company that acts as a receiver and takes care of the property, because the property is not being cared for. That usually involves a legal action. The separate trustee is appointed. The trustee takes over the property, cleans it up, brings it up to remediation, and usually ends up selling it to pay for the trustee's cost of doing that. As a practical matter, what that means is usually the property owner doesn't end up with anything on the back end. Usually, the city's lucky if it recovers even some of its costs, and the trustee ends up with most of the money as long as, assuming that somebody hasn't declared bankruptcy or gone through another process, which slows down the procedure for doing that. So there are options for moving forward, but there are no fast options for long-term resolution, given the legal constrictions that we have in the state of California. So if the council is inclined to move forward, and there are no other options about privately moving forward, just keep in mind, we can move fairly quickly, but sometimes it takes courts a long time. There's processes in place, and they don't result in permanent solutions, often for months. So I hope that's been helpful outlining that.
Ms. Macy, do you, Ben, would you want to say something?
You know, so Ben Moody, Development Services Director, I'd just like to add on, from code enforcement standpoint, that absolutely, we hear the complaints, and it's on our list of items that we're actively working on. And so definitely, that case is ongoing. As the city attorney has referenced, it's complicated. And we want it all to be resolved. But definitely, right now, there's a lien on the property for the current outstanding issues. And we're currently working with the attorney's office to look at what it takes to move forward with the abatement warrant. As that, it's a process. There's private rights. There's processes that have to go through. But something like the abatement warrant, that is a concern that we work, that we need to work through, because just to do the legal and the court cost is about $16,000. And then you have to come in, and then you clean the property up for $10,000. And then you might be looking at the same thing in another six months from now. And so, so then, long-term, that lien goes onto the property, but you can't get to a foreclosure state for a couple of years. And then ultimately, what happens when it forecloses? Who takes that over? And how do you move it towards actually, you know, turning it into a future house that's paying property taxes that's a benefit to the neighborhood? And so trying to figure out that strategy, multi-pronged approaches. But absolutely, we hear the concerns. We definitely recommend, please, continue coordinating, you know, with code enforcement and through the police department, because it helps us document it. It helps us try to resolve any current issues we can. But when you have a property owner that's not motivated by liens or taxes, it's a difficult situation to resolve timely.
Through the mayor, if I could, it's often very helpful from code enforcement perspective if there are neighbors or people in the community who regularly take pictures of the conditions and document stuff as well, not just through police calls, but like this day at this time, this day at this time, this day at this time, is that it's very helpful in preparing a file. And when we go in to try to persuade a judge to go on someone's personal and private property, it's very helpful to have lists of all the pictures, when they were taken, and photo evidence for the court. Thank you.
Would you want to say something, sir?
Did you, did you have something?
Well, yeah, but just real quick. Ms. Macy, you have, you've heard a lot just now. And I tell you what, if I was you, I'd be glad to know I have a list of options here, right? It was a lot to remember. So I'm just going to remind you that this is recorded, so you can go online, listen to it in slow motion, and write all your stuff down, okay? And it sounds like code enforcement and folks that are on it as best they can for you, plus you have some legal options. And you going to say something too, sir?
I wasn't going to say anything. I was just going to get clarification.
Okay.
I want to make sure I heard this correctly.
So, yeah.
One of the initial options, it sounded like, was for a private concern to take up the issue, and that we, as a city, could not do that.
Yes, the city cannot finance private individuals' civil suits or foreclosures. We can't pick winners and losers as public entities. However, in theory, this is me brainstorming, if the city already owned a lien that it could foreclose on, in theory, the city could foreclose on the property, pay off any pre-existing liens, clean up the property, and then resell it.
And I guess that's kind of where I was headed, is what could we do? Because she's living next to a dangerous situation, where there are folks that apparently have already threatened her. And, you know, waiting for somebody to go out and find out a private concern that would take this on, which I'm sure there are people that would do that. But I don't know, you know, I guess I'm listening to her, and I'm trying to figure out, in my mind, as a citizen of this city as well, if this was my neighbor, I'm going to excuse the language, I'd be pissed. You know, and I'd be looking at, you know, what are you going to do for me, city? And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, and I appreciate the brainstorm. I'm trying to figure out where we have at least some wiggle room to intercede here and get involved at a level that doesn't overexpose us to something that we can't do, give to public funds, but not, you know, subject her to go out and try to figure out where she might find somebody to take on her case.
And I 100% agree and understand where you're coming from. I do want to make sure this conversation doesn't turn into an agenda item, because it is public comment. I would note, however, this, again, kind of as a hint, that if there were judgments or any things...
I just wanted to clarify something.
Yeah, that it would, might be a good idea to provide them to Mr. Moody. And if he were inclined to send them my direction, I'd be more than happy to look at them to see if the city might have any interest in that and how to acquire those.
I just wanted to clarify that I do have a civil lawsuit judgment and a lien on the property currently. It's been really complicated for me to walk myself through that to this point. I have recently looked into, and I've started the foreclosure process. My understanding is it's a four-month process, which just feels like forever, but I'm going to move forward with that. That being kind of the last option is disappointing. I just want to say that, I mean, honestly, that I have to civilly go and deal with this. And again, I think our citizens should know. I do have a very significant lawsuit documenting lots and lots and lots and lots. I continue to retain video, although no one ever sees them. So I'm happy to provide whatever the city needs. I just want this to be addressed.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker card submitted by, excuse me, P.R. Joe, I believe.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
One request before we move on. If we could get some type of follow-up report back to council on what develops after the discussions tonight and the report that came out, so we can be kept upright to the situation going forward. That would be my request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the staff. I hope that everybody had exercised their right to vote today, because I did. In any case, with all that done, I'm here to complain about the parade that the sick temple had over the weekend. During that parade, I have lost a whole lot out there. People have ran over my trees, broke my water main gate, the, also, the air lines. And that orchard, I own 180 acres around the temple. There's 20 acres to the northwest of the temple. And we, as the farmers, have roads around it and in between, so we can go through it during the season. And people kind of consider those to be their roads, not mine. Now, we own from the east side of Young Road all the way up to the PG&E substation. And then from that substation on Peace Road all the way up to Thrace Peakos. Now, they all have several roads going in and out. Now, this was the first year that I went ahead after my father and my son are saying that put a levee up, put a levee up, so they won't go across it. Took me two and a half days to put a levee up. They still crossed it. After one goes in it, and there is a bunch of people that just follow them through. Now, looking at, you know, some of that is in the city, some of that is in the county. Now, looking at the city side, I believe most of that property on, of Peace Road is in the city. Now, I have about four to five entries going to my orchard and everything else, and they use that. Then also, from Belleville Road, just before you end up at Belleville, and we have that property also. And what they did was, they went to the west, right behind the houses, between the prune orchard and the fence of the houses, and went right through my property again. It's not just one car or two cars. There are 20, 30, 40, 50 cars. Now, I stayed there on Friday by the temple, and I had eight to 10 cars towed. That didn't make any difference. Now, Sarb brought in probably an excellent plan to the city and the county to do that function. It probably was a good plan, but it was not implemented. Originally, if my thinking is, what they did was, they had the entry made up on Terabuena on the south side and exit on the north side. And also, the city or the temple paid for the A-frame barracks to put on the road on Terabuena all the way from the temple to Peace Road and stating, no event parking. Well, Friday night, there wasn't any. But Saturday and Sunday, both sides were filled up. Now, getting back on Friday, since I had to stay there, the people coming on my road from Elmer Road to cross to Terabuena, I stood right in the middle or right at the end, and I sent them back. Yes, I had some bullies bullying me that they're going to go through, so I had to challenge. They backed out. And there was one young man that even stood there, that he's going to do what he's going to do. And he goes out there, after I denied it, he went out there to pull up a post, and he couldn't pull that post, that Mr. Sarb Terrar probably pushed in there, the T-post. So I kind of sarcastically said, "Son, maybe the next post is not deep enough. Try that." He got into his vehicle, backing up. Then the passenger out of his car goes in. Now, that fence is a plastic tied with zip ties. He breaks it, goes across, and then when he comes close to me, I'm on the other side of the fence now, doing about 60 miles an hour. I called Sarb up and told him, hey, this is what's going on. He said, "Well, we're announcing here not to park, not to park, not to park." They still do it. I said, "Well, nobody's implementing it." Now, I did have a talk with the deputy sheriff, excuse me, Sergeant Berg, and he said, "Well, there will be some county people out there." Well, there were deputy sheriffs, two of them. I did have an argument with the security guard from the temple, that he was telling me to move my truck out of my property. But anyhow, the time is up. This is what's going on. So if you guys are going to go ahead and give them a permit, hey, this is what's going on around the properties. And I have seen people on the west side that sit there and guard their property. And I don't think that, as the property owners, we should need to sit out there and watch that.
Thank you, Mr. Joe.
So I hope that next time that you guys could take a little better action and implement a better system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public care to make a comment about something? Tony, come on up.
Tony Curlin, 636 Anna Drive, Yuba City. This is of much lighter nature here. I just want to remind everybody, council, staff, audience, and those who might be watching, we have a senior resource fair coming up on Thursday morning at the Senior Center. All are invited. We have approximately 70 nonprofits showing up. So come one, come all.
What time?
Starts at 9, goes to 12.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Thursday, Tony?
Thursday. Thursday.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? All right. We'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any public comment on consent calendar items two through five? Nothing? I'm going to go ahead and briefly poll item number four. Can we have a motion or other comment on two, three, and five?
Ratify two, three, and five?
All right.
Second.
First and second to approve items two, three, and five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passed unanimously. Item number four, because I see some folks, we have a familiar face, is our youth commission appointees. And I'm going to give, what do you think about these meetings so far? Of course, you're going to say good. Good answer. Good answer. And if you don't mind, those of you who are here, would you mind? Introducing yourself. Would you like to stand up real quick and introduce yourself? Starting in the back row. There you are.
Yep.
Hello, my name is Mary.
Well, good to see you again. Is that dad next to you?
Yeah.
All right. Good to see you too, sir. Thank you very much. She did a great job. All you guys did some really good jobs in your interviews. That's why you're here, of course. But it's the youth commission. You can sit down. The youth commission is always the toughest ones to do the interviews, because everyone is so good and they're enthusiastic and they want to contribute, and it shows through. Right, Vice Mayor?
Absolutely.
It was, it's a good time. In fact, that's why way back when, we didn't want to turn anybody away. And so we even created more alternate positions in order to accommodate and get some people, get their foot in the door. So we're happy to have you. And so go ahead. I know you love me right now, don't you?
I'm Ellie Harke, and this is my second year.
Yeah. What grade are you in?
11th grade.
11th grade. All right.
Hi, my name is Sonic Calum. I'm also 11th grade, and this is my first year.
What school do you go to, ma'am?
River Valley.
River Valley. That's right. All right. Drum roll.
I will graduate now. I'm also 11th grade and go to River Valley.
All right. Very good. Well, welcome to all of you. Did I miss anybody? All right. Well, thank you very much, and welcome to the team. All right. Now, we're going to move on.
Nope. Need a motion.
Oh.
Through the mayor?
That's right.
Public comment.
You think after eight years, I learned how to do this. We need a motion to, actually, that's what I meant by moving on. We're going to move on to a vote. After we do public comment. Public comment. Nothing. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Move that we approve the recommendations and appointments to the youth commission, as they all did really good.
Now, we've got a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I think we know that's unanimous. So welcome. Now officially. All right. Now we'll go to item number six, business items.
Through the mayor. Before we do, could I announce that there's no reportable action taken in closed session?
You may.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Must be election night or something. I don't know. Number six, zoning amendment updating the development standards for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, J, ADUs, for consistency with state law. Hello, Doug.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Happy election evening. Okay, so this is kind of a housekeeping item to update our code for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, to incorporate those legislative changes into the municipal code to bring it consistent with state law. This picture up on the screen kind of shows what an ADU is. For those who don't know, an accessory dwelling unit, it provides complete independent living facilities, including kitchen and bathroom, and located on a lot with a proposed or existing home. ADUs can be detached or attached, and they can go up to 1,200 square feet in size. There's a smaller variant called a junior accessory dwelling unit. That is contained within an existing home, limited to 500 square feet. It may share a kitchen, but not a bathroom with the primary home. And again, it's either going to be an addition to an existing home or a conversion of space within the home. So what are the benefits of this type of housing? Well, it adds to the variety of housing options in our community. It doesn't oftentimes require purchase of new land. If you own a piece of property, you frequently can develop an ADU. It doesn't require a lot of new infrastructure. It's suitable in a variety of location and context, so it's flexible. Utilize standard building materials, which is important to minimize costs. There's an option for prefabricated or modular units. It provides additional housing compatible with single-family neighborhoods. There's opportunities for supplemental income for homeowners when rented out. It can provide options for independent living and aging in place, and can provide greater privacy for multi-generational households. Those last two bullet points kind of hit home for me, because at my place, we actually have a detached ADU that my mother-in-law lives in, and it works out really well for us. So recent changes. While our friends in the legislature, and I use friends loosely, have a history of liking to make changes to state laws, this is one area of the law where they seem to frequently tinker with over the last five to seven years. And it puts cities and counties in the position of every couple of years needing to bring forward updates. And so our ordinance was last updated in 2022, and that's what we're coming for tonight with new changes. So what are those proposed revisions? Well, due to the changes, we currently require a zoning clearance at the time that a property owner applies for a building permit. Well, that requirement for a zoning clearance, we can no longer require. So basically, it's stripping away requirements, so that basically you come in, you apply for a building permit, staff reviews it consistent with the standards at the time of building permit, and that's it. They can now be established in all zone districts, allowing a dwelling unit. So typically, we see in ADUs in R1 through R3 residential districts. Well, you can actually do it in commercial and industrial zones when there's been a dwelling lawfully established, or if there's a legal non-conforming home. That would then entitle you to be able to apply for and get an accessory dwelling unit. Lot of language here, but basically, if you have an attached ADU, and if the only expansion is 150 square feet, that's to accommodate ingress and egress, and not over 16 feet in height, we have to look at it. It's within the existing space. Clarify that in multifamily dwellings, ADUs are allowed within portions of existing multifamily structures, not used as living space. So the statute gives some examples, and I should say the guidelines, give examples of storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways, attics, basements, and garages. You have to go through a building permit process to convert it to living space and get a certificate of occupancy, but the statute makes clear that we have to allow those opportunities. It also says that detached ADUs must be located on the same lot as the proposed or existing dwelling. Seems pretty straightforward. If you have a developed lot with an adjacent undeveloped lot, it just means that the ADU is only allowed on the lot with the home unless you merge the parcels. This is, I think, probably one of the most important changes that I like to see, is that consolidating the standards as much as possible into a single table, easy use. It benefits the public trying to understand the rules, it benefits staff from trying to implement the rules. Now, the statute does provide for a maximum ADU size of 1,200 square feet. However, the statute also allows agencies to adopt reduced ADU sizes of 850 square feet for one-bedroom units and 1,000 square feet when you have more than one bedroom. Now, since ADUs are not subject to a zone district's maximum percent lot coverage threshold, this can result in urban lots being significantly covered with structures, leaving little onsite open space, especially when you consider the fact that typical lot, you might have a patio cover, you could have a storage shed in back. You can see where a lot could quickly get, appear cluttered. So staff carried forward the reduced ADU size option to the planning commission. However, the planning commission recommended keeping the 1,200-square-foot size threshold. Now, it's on that point that we handed out an updated ordinance to before the start of tonight's meeting, because in table, we had to do a cleanup. In table 8-5.5004A, that's in the ordinance, we had to make a correction to make it consistent with that 1,200-square-foot threshold. Attached ADUs will continue to be limited to 50% of the floor area of the primary home on the property, up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet. As you know, you must make findings in order to amend the municipal code. These are the findings, like shown up on the screen. The required findings have been made in the proposed materials before you, and been recommended by the planning commission. Now, this action is actually not subject to environmental review due to the public resources code section specified on the screen. Planning commission considered this item on October 9, and recommended approval of the ordinance that's before you. So staff recommends you conduct a public hearing and introduce an ordinance of the city council, the city of Uba City, repealing, replacing, and renaming section 8-5005 to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, adopt a sequel finding under public resources code section 21080.17, and waive the first reading. And I would just, if you choose to make a motion tonight, please reference the amended ordinance distributed ahead of tonight's meeting. And that would conclude my comments.
Doug, and forgive me if you've already answered this, but you mentioned that the attached ADUs are required to have their own bathroom, but may share a kitchen. Is that correct?
It's the, it's the, ADUs have their own bathroom and kitchen.
And.
Yes. It's the smaller variant, junior ADUs. They're allowed to have what's called a efficiency kitchen, or they could share the kitchen in the primary home. They have to have their own bathroom.
Okay, then, okay, that's what I was talking about then. The junior ADUs may share a kitchen, but have their own bathroom.
Yes.
So what would be the difference between that versus a home that has two master suites?
So they also have to have their own entrance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comment real quick? Any public comment on the item? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And let's see here. All right, we have a public hearing on the issue. Anybody want to comment on it? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Move that we introduce an ordinance of the city council, the city of Uba City, repealing, replacing, and renaming section 8-5005 to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, adopt a sequel finding under public resource code section 21080.17, and waive the first reading. And this is in regards to the updated.
Amended.
Amended report that was given to us tonight.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
Councilmember Shaw, or Vice Mayor Shaw.
Yep.
Would that also include section six through 13, that the additions are anything referring to accessory dwelling units? We may have some underlining for you the next time around?
Yeah, that works for me.
Thank you. Works for me too. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passes. Thank you very much. As always, Doug. Thank you. We'll go on to number seven, street banner policy and program. They're escaping. If you all want to escape too, I completely understand. All right, you're good. All right.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Kristi Morales, and I'm here to go over the street banner policy and program. The purpose is to amend the street banner policy program to incorporate guidelines for the hometown hero banner program, allowing Uba City residents and their immediate family members who have served or are currently serving in the United States Armed Forces to be recognized. This initiative aims to promote civic pride and honor service members through a consistent display of banners. A little bit of background is at the city council meeting on February 4, 2020, the city council adopted the current administrative policy for the street banner and policy and program. After reviewing the policy, staff is recommending a revision to create guidelines for the hometown hero banner program. Eligibility honorees must be active, retired, or honorably discharged members of the United States Armed Forces. Eligible applicants must be a current Uba City resident, graduate of a Uba City high school, or immediate family member of a current Uba City resident. Banner locations, initially 40 light poles spanning from Bridge Street, from Gray Avenue to Pluma Street, have been designated for the banner installation. Additional locations may be identified, depending on the program's popularity. And then the banner placements are on a first-come, first-served basis. Designing material standards, banners will be designed and produced under the city management to ensure consistent in quality. We have there the size and the material to withstand weather and time. The display period will have two separate collections of the banners displayed for approximately six months. The first collection will be installed ahead of Memorial Day. The second collection will be installed prior to Veterans Day. The banner installation will be subject to availability of city staff and resources. Weather conditions may also affect the timing of installation and removal. And then additionally, the banners will be on the city's website year-round, revealing. Application and costs, the current banner cost is set at $360, covering the production, installation, and removal. However, the fee is subject to change in response to fluctuating costs incurred by the city. It'll also go on the fee schedule and will be determined by the city manager. These guidelines ensure a well-organized program with a clear processing for honoring Uba City's military service members. There will be no impact to the general fund. All costs associated with the street banner program will be funded by the banner installation charges. Alternatives would be do not adopt the revised street banner policy and program guidelines, modify the proposed guidelines. The recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution to amend the city's existing street banner policy to include the hometown hero banner program guidelines. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir. Great presentation. Just one quick question. The application, is that on the website?
It will be on the website, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor. I see you only have Uba City High School, River Valley. People are not going to be...
Just a Uba City high school.
Oh, a Uba City. Gotcha. Okay. Because I'm from Uba City High School.
Just anywhere in Uba City.
Clarified it.
Gentlemen, nothing?
Oh, I do.
Go ahead.
Something that I've been discussing with Colonel McLeese and the people at Beal that I would like for us to really consider, and we need to work out the fine details, but according to those banners, that's all active, current, retired, whatever, from our area that can be on those poles. At the base themselves, every quarter, they select four people that are the top junior enlisted, NCO and senior NCO, and company-grade officer. And it would make a nice statement if we reserved four spots for every quarter, if we can work this out with the base, to honor those that are currently serving in our community out at Beal that are recognized as the top. So do we need to make changes to this policy now, or can that be at direction later?
I have also talked to the Beal, and they reached, they said that you reached that as well. And I think it would be considered, since they are currently in Uba City.
And currently serving.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
I would say if they resided in Uba City.
Right.
But if they were residing in Placer County or Nevada County, I mean, I think what we're trying to do is recognize those folks who are here in the city of Uba City. So that would be something for, I mean, that would be my personal opinion, is if one of those four individuals or all four of those individuals, I mean, I'm not trying to disrespect the fact that they are serving our country, but I think that the purpose of the program is to recognize those folks who have a tie to this city. So respectfully, I say they should, if they're living here, great. But if they're a resident of Lincoln, maybe Lincoln should be highlighting their service, not necessarily Uba City.
And if I can respond to that, they may live on the base. The fact is, is they are an extension of our community because we have close ties with the base. I just thought it would be a nice gesture that we recognize and honor them as we bring them in, because it's just a good thing to do.
So this policy would be for individuals wanting to sponsor a banner within the city. In terms of city operations, we can reserve however many banner locations that we want for whatever programs that we implement.
Okay.
Just kind of the same, but different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Kristi, you have everything you need?
I just want to follow up, make sure what we're doing here is, so this program is for city residents. We can add additional locations to accommodate the four folks that are the Beal people.
Yes.
Okay. I just don't want to displace.
Basically, the same, but different, because we have the Uba College stuff out there sometimes. It's the same place, same thing, but under a different umbrella.
I'm just saying, for those specific sites, that's Uba City people, if we want to add sites to accommodate the request that the vice mayor's made, I don't have any issue with that. That's just an additional one. I just wouldn't want to take away from those folks who live in Uba City.
We have a street banner application as well. So that would be totally separate from this one.
Okay. Well, then to clarify again, we're not, for the street banner program, we're not adding sites, though. We're just using the same ones after these have run their course. Same place.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is that clear?
I think it says up there, and I'm sorry, not trying to get in the weeds here.
That's okay.
But I believe it says we can add more sites.
Yes, depending on the availability and popularity, we can add more, determine different locations, but.
So a friendly amendment would be is to designate four sites just to accommodate those folks on a periodic basis who are identified as Beal. Beals, what's the word they use? The airmen of the month?
Yeah, it's basically their airmen and NCO, senior NCO, and company-grade officer of the quarter.
So can we add four sites?
Yeah.
Perfect.
We're good.
All right. So now I have a question. Adding a site when these are on light poles, light poles are thousands of dollars.
No, no, adding more hardware.
What other, okay, add more hardware. Okay.
Other site.
Now I'm with you. All right. We good? All right. And he's going to think I'm going to forget this, but I'm going to ask for public comment on this item. He was ready to go, weren't you?
It was actually something else this time, but thank you for getting public comment. I appreciate it.
All right. See? Any public comment? All right. Come on back for some action.
Through the mayor.
All right. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the city's existing street banner policy to include the hometown hero banner program guidelines.
Second? Through the, through the, through the mayor. I'm so sorry for the first and the second. Did you want to add specific language to the guidelines to reserve four places for Beal Active Air Force Base?
I hope you believe me, I hope you believe me when I say you beat me to it, because I was going to ask the same thing. So that, would that be okay for you?
On the motion, yes.
Okay. We're reserving four sites and reserve the right to add them to the polls as well.
And will you authorize staff to add that language, consistent with the City Council's ...
Certainly will.
All righty, thank you so much.
Kristi, great job.
So we, Mr. Mayor, we have a first and a second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
He got me on something. All right, Dan, here we go. Number eight.
Thank you. So the item before you tonight is the Habitat for Humanity Yubusutter Inc.'s request for a site control letter for 211 and 217 South Walton Avenue, which is the city-owned vacant property south of the Moose Lodge. In September of 2020, City Council declared these properties as surplus properties. We initiated the Surplus Land Act in which we have to send out notices to housing sponsors and which Habitat for Humanity submitted a letter of interest to purchase the property. And in that time, we've brought forward in February of 2024, an exclusive negotiation agreement with Habitat, which was intended to act as a site control document for a grant application that they were submitting for the Tranquil Harbor Estates Senior Assisted Living Project, which is a 29-unit senior affordable housing project. Some key terms of the exclusive negotiating agreement is it's a 365-day term in which we have, would provide us the ability to negotiate terms towards the possible execution of a subsequent purchase agreement or disposition and development agreement. So the ENA expires February 19 of 2025, and then during this period, we are supposed to diligently try to execute that agreement, the DDA. So Habitat for Humanity applied for a almost $7.8 million grant through the U.S. Department of Housing or Urban Development's fiscal year 2023, Section 202, Supportive Housing for the Elderly Program. And so HUD has been reviewing the application and recently sent them a curable deficiency letter, which is exactly what it sounds like, in that there's a deficiency in the grant application, but if you submit certain things, you can meet the requirements of the application. And so Habitat requested that the city provide a letter that must indicate that conveyance of the site is acceptable without imposition of additional covenants or restrictions and only contingent on the necessary approval action. And if Habitat receives the grant, HUD will require that Habitat provide within 30 business days of an award notification a legally binding agreement conditional on an environmental review satisfactory to HUD from the city to convey the site. So there's a couple of items here. With the previous discussion that we need to negotiate a disposition and development agreement, those terms are yet to be determined. So if you look at the draft letter that's attached to the staff report, and I also have it as a slide here, there's language specific in there that they will have site control provided they meet the terms of the ENA and the to-be-negotiated DDA. In regards to the ability to have a legally binding agreement within 30 business days of, of grant award, that one could be problematic because I noted that we're midway through the Surplus Land Act process. So we're in the negotiation phase. Once we have an agreement that, that we agree on the terms to sell the property to Habitat, I need to submit that to HCD for HCD to review to say, yes, we have complied with the Surplus Land Act, and then we have the authority to move forward. I don't know what that timeline will be for HCD, and I may not be able to meet the timeline for HUD's request for, within 30 business days. That's not saying that HUD may not grant an extension with the circumstances, but just based upon what's been provided to date, I just want to flag that. So here is the location of Tranquil Harbor Estates. Here's the Moose Lodge, the vacant properties. Here's a site plan showing the 29 units. There's also a community space right here and an office. So the proposed site control letter attempts to meet HUD's requirements while retaining the city's authority to negotiate terms of the DDA. And then also, once I, I also mentioned that, you know, we might have difficulty meeting the 30-business-day requirement for a legally binding agreement. So here's the draft letter. Again, it says it's intended to provide proof of site control for the city-owned properties upon compliance with the terms of the exclusive negotiation agreement executed between the city and Habitat on February 2024, and a subsequent disposition and development agreement to be drafted and executed for the transfer of the property to Habitat for Humanity Yubusutter. The city will convey the properties without imposition of additional covenants or restrictions outside of those already contemplated in the ENA and subsequent DDA. So in the letter, I tried to provide enough cover for the city that we have the ability to negotiate terms in the DDA. And I'm sorry for all the acronyms, it's just easier than pronouncing those, those full statements. So with that, there's no fiscal impact associated with providing a site control letter provided the terms of the ENA are met. And so Tranquil Harbor Estates' estimated cost is $11.8 million. Habitat submitted a grant request to HUD for $7.8 million. In the spreadsheet that they provided for the financials for the project, they noted a loan of $2 million and a Habitat for Humanity cash development match of $2 million. If this were all to go through, the city would receive proceeds upon the sale of the Alternatives are to not take, to not authorize a letter indicating that Habitat will have site control of the properties. However, I want to note that failure to provide such a site control letter could result in Habitat's grant application being denied. And so the request is that you consider the request from Habitat, and then if you're authorizing the submission of a proof of control letter, adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the letter. And with that, I would like to note that we do have John Nicoletti in the audience tonight representing Habitat, and then also via Zoom, we have Joseph Hale with Habitat, and then Brian Belayo with Thurman Consulting, who has been actively engaged in this project as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any indication that there is 100% financing for this?
I think, I think that that's a question that's best for the Habitat team. Through email exchanges this afternoon, Joseph indicated that their goal is to have this project 100% funded through grants. I wasn't able to get additional information as to the other potential grant that they might be pursuing, so I think that would be best for the Habitat team if they could to address the question related to the funding for the project.
Yeah, and, and actually, this is Brian Belayo. If I might jump in, and then I know that John Nicoletti and Joseph Hale can also plus one some of the comments that we have. So the idea to frame this project and the financing plan for Tranquility Harbor is to focus primarily on grants. When we submitted this application, we wanted to kind of show that there was an intention and an approach to absolve any type of, and absorb any type of costs associated with the project. Currently, we have $7.7 million that we are requesting from the HUD 202 program. The intention is to shift gears and as opposed to going for a loan through Citibank to go and submit an application through the home program, there's a NOF that's coming out in December of this year, and the funding window opens up in February. So the idea is that the HUD 202 dollars attached with the home application that we'll submit in February, that will comprise the totality of the financing that will be needed and required for the Tranquility Harbor project.
So the answer is no. You don't have 100% financing for this? But you want to take control?
Yes, all financing will be coming through the grants. I see that Joseph, Joseph muted as well.
I, I just wanted to mention, the standard process when we're going through these grant applications is usually it takes two or three grants to cover a number of these projects. So we go after one. Once we have one in place, it makes it much easier to leverage additional funding, you know, because obviously you're building up funding over the next year or two. So I mean, the goal that we always go for, and this is something we've done across, so we work across 13 communities between cities and counties, and this is a process we've done for, for many years. And usually we'll get the first grant, then we'll leverage the other, and typically all grants require site control because they want to know if you're funded. But once you get funded, you can reach out and work with agencies and from other, other grants that supplement these to finish the project. So it's, it's kind of part of the standard process, so we feel comfortable that as we go through grants and we leverage things, that we do get to the full amount. And we're fine with, you know, obviously not moving forward until we have the full amount of money, but if we don't have some site control, even conditional site control that says, hey, if you get the money, we're good to move forward with this project. So, so we're completely comfortable with that, that, but what happens is if we don't have that, they don't feel comfortable putting the money in place. And that's just a standard, any, any grant you apply for via HUD, HCD, pretty much a standard process is some level of site control to show that you're going to be able to utilize the funding for the project.
I don't feel comfortable with that. Doing a project and not having your money upfront and then wanting control of a piece of property kind of leaves us in a, on the end of a, a bored dead man's walk, and I got nowhere to retreat to. I got to jump, and I'm not comfortable with that, sitting here. This is a great project, don't get me wrong, it's probably one of the best projects I've seen you bring across, but you continually have a lot of maybe kind of we're hoping, and I can't take that to my constituents and the people, and I can't do that in good conscience, it's sitting in this seat of wishing a prayer.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Joseph or Brian, you mentioned conditional site control. Could you expand on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So when we're saying site control, we don't mean that we own the property and there's no power. What we mean is you give us a period of time that we can get that funding in. So it's not you're going to lose out on everything, it's just we need a period of time. So if we don't meet that, you still get the property back and it's not ours. So it, it's not a end-all situation where you lose it, it's just we need to show that if we go forward, if we get the funding, that we need to complete the project, that you're willing to provide site control. So I just wanted to clarify, it's not a, you know, if we don't get money, you're stuck with us having the property, it's a, if we get the funding, you're guaranteeing that we can go forward with the property. That, that's the difference.
So I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just plus one that, I think Joseph summarized that perfectly. What we're, what we're hoping for today is a chance to compete for these dollars. And so in this threshold, in the curable deficiency that they sent over, this being the only thing that they're asking for, tells us that we're in a really good space to actually pull down this $7.7 million and complete, you know, a pretty good portion of our capital stack. So to Joseph's point, we're just fighting for the chance to compete for these dollars, but that in no way says that, you know, that immediately leads to the, you know, conveyance of the, of the site. Of course, we're going to still go through the ENA process, satisfy those conditions, the DDA, and everything else that we've already described.
I appreciate the, the explanation. I also appreciate and agree with the position that Councilman Pasquale talked about is I'm reluctant to say, hey, look, you, you've got site control of our property, so I'd be interested in, in seeing a conditional site control document that could be vetted by our, our city attorney, and just make sure that, that we aren't giving you something that we can't recover from with sometimes certain in that condition. I'm just not familiar with that doc, that kind of document, and would look towards you to provide us with something that we could consider.
The conditional site control document, that's kind of contrary to what we've been told up until right now, in that we were, I remember reading a lot of times where it's unconditioned, we're not allowed to have any conditions, we convey the property to you with no restrictions whatsoever is what they're wanting. I've never heard the other, the conditional angle before.
So, yeah, so, you know, maybe just to parallel the two, so the letter as drafted has conditions already baked in. So as the letter reads, it is a conditional letter, it's a conditional document that says that Habitat needs to go through certain processes before the site can be conveyed. So the letter reads as such already. So perhaps, you know, it's, maybe it'd be helpful for us to understand, are there additional covenants or restrictions that the city is, is considering outside of what we've already kind of walked through within the ENA and the DDA?
And that we don't know yet. Things can change. Maybe we have someone up, do you have a comment?
Oh, absolutely, through the mayor. First of all, there's two projects that you guys have brought forward in this town that I would really like to see go forward. It's Merrymet Village and the senior housing. The problem I have over what I've seen, and I'm just going to be blunt, is trust. We have Merrymet Village that's still $6 million or so short, and no progress has been made there, and yet now we're $4 million short on this, and we're back to basically unconditional release, or the conditions, the conditions in the letter are not the conditions that I'm comfortable with. Conditions are going to have to be tightened down, just like they were with Merrymet Village, so the money has to stay with that project. You can't have the property to go get a loan against it, get cash flow, and transfer it and go this property and that property to try to do the projects. They need to be self-sufficient, and we've had two years to work on this. That's the disappointing part. So here we are, suddenly we need to give unconditional conveyance of the property or maybe minor conditions, and I'm not comfortable with those. I want to make sure if we do something, this project is going to get built and built timely, and at this point with the actions I've seen, I just don't have that confidence, because I don't even know if we're going to get Merrymet off the ground with the, the millions of dollars that we have to, to do there. The council wants to do the affordable housing and meet the needs of our, our people that call Yuba City home. We just don't, you know, we're not going to overextend ourselves, and we need this locked in, and I'm not, definitely not comfortable with that. Mike, you hit it dead on the head with what you said out of the chute, but the conditions thus far are not near enough. So I think that tells you where I'm at. I'm comfortable right where we are.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And thank you for that presentation, Diana. This, this, this particular project, the mayor and I had the opportunity to sit through two community meetings, and, you know, it's, it's obvious that the, the need is there. The need is there for, for senior affordable housing, and I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have already mentioned this evening, but the, the site control that the, the mayor brought up, that, that kind of got, that kind of got, the, the conditions of that kind of got blindsided me as well. But going back to what, Diana, what you mentioned, the theoretical denial of a site control tonight, you said could potentially lead to a denial of the grant application. But in theory, couldn't that, could that application be, be resubmitted at, at another time?
I would pose that question to Brian and Joseph in terms of future rounds, because that was a fiscal year 2023 HUD grant, I don't know if there's future rounds for that specific program.
Yeah, I can talk to some of that. So the situation that occurs, and I know it was mentioned that, you know, we're two years into it, well, when you first procure a property, you have to do all of the designs, get everything together, and do all the preliminary work from, you know, having the site examined, having physical needs assessments, having a number of things done in order to have a grant application. And then once you start submitting grants, typically there's site control, but the site control can be conditioned upon, hey, this is limited to acquiring funding. So site control doesn't mean we own the property or... So site control doesn't mean we own the property or it stops anyone from having access, um, you know, to canceling an agreement if we don't meet the, the need. But kind of the, the catch 22 of this is in order to secure grant funding and to get the full amount, so to cover the full costs of the projects, those are some of the elements that come into play is in, any grant you do, as I said, with, with HUD and HCD, you have to have some level of site control or they don't fund you. So it's kind of like, we need to show that we have full funding for this, but we can't get site control to get full funding for it. So it's kind of like one of those catch 22s is, you know, we can't move forward with the project without having certain things set up to where we can move forward. So we just need to be able to, to apply for grants, to procure funding, have certain things that, that we can do, or it's just kind of, it's like, here's a, we want to see a project, but it can't happen because we can't meet these conditions. And we want to be able to move forward and, and across, like I said, I, you know, the jurisdictions we work in, we've, we've done this many, many times over a decade. Um, and this is kind of the steps you, in order to get the full project funding, you, it's not all at once. Typically you'll get a portion from one and then you reach out to secure another grant. But as we go through that process, we procure all the funding and then finish the project. So the funding gaps are kind of part of it. We try to use some habitat funding or back it up with habitat funding as we can, but our goal ultimately is to get these projects fully grant funded. And we've done that with Harmony Village, uh, Prosperity Village, Purpose Place Apartments. Uh, we've done that with Oak Haven. Uh, we completed that with Sierra Vista. These are all large developments in our area that have all been completed through this process with, you know, Yuba County, Sutter County, uh, the county of Glenn, Orland, all these jurisdictions that, that we work with. So this is a process, uh, that's normal and it doesn't stop, I, I don't believe it stops you guys from having power over, uh, the property, uh, because if we don't meet the conditions, then we don't get it anyway. And it goes back to the city to do something else with.
Thank you, Joseph. Are we going to follow?
And maybe if.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Um, if I, if I could just add to Joseph's comments there and maybe, uh, address the, the question as well. Um, as Joseph mentioned, we're, we're, we all understand what we're trying to do. We're doing affordable housing with a capital A. And to Joseph's point, it takes a long time to cobble these funds together. As we all know, today is election day, right? So maybe Diana, to your question, we're not sure on when the next round will be for HUD 202 and we're not sure on how the funding conditions will change. We've seen in the past 18 months, they've changed drastically. We're not sure what the next four years will look like as well. So, you know, our, our battle, and I think maybe our like interest is always to say, when there's funds available, like we're competing as strongly as we can and try to secure those because we're not sure what tomorrow will look like. Um, so that I think is a short answer of saying, we're not sure what that climate or that horizon for funding will look like. And so we have to always take it as what do we have now and what are we able to, to do in order to, to pull that down and, and actually disperse it for projects?
Thank you for that. Um, and I, I do, I do want to bring up something that just came to my mind. Um, this, this is brought up by the vice mayor a moment ago. Back in May, uh, during the, uh, the first, um, mayor's bus tour, uh, uh, this year, um, I participated in the, um, the introduction or discussion of, of Merrymet Village, um, on that stop. And it was, it was, it was done very well. Um, it was, there's a lot of excitement in the air because not too many communities in the state of California, um, were awarded, um, part of the, uh, the funding for that. So that was exciting, but that, but somebody raised their hand and said, when is the first shovel going to go in the ground? And the answer was July 1st. And here we are in October, and I understand that we're, excuse me, November. Thank you. Thank you. And, and I understand we're talking two different projects, but, um, it, it, it doesn't give me the warm and fuzzies and it really tests my level of, uh, my, my, my comfort, comfort level on this. And so, um, thank you.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Um, i- if I might just maybe respond to that. Um, you know, as you mentioned, Merrymet Village and Tranquility Harbor are two different projects. You have Merrymet, which is 217 units, you know, across three different phases. And of course, there's going to be so many different areas that we're trying to bridge on that project. This is a completely different project. This is 29 units. It's a senior, you know, senior housing, a very small, you know, amount of dollars that are necessary for the project. And we're competing for, I would say, low hanging fruit through HUD 202 and through Home. Home has a ceiling for developers to ask for up to $12 million. We're only asking for up to 3.5. And I think that with our experience and all the different projects we've done to date, we have also a very strong likelihood of pulling down home dollars. So I would say these two different projects, I understand this is both in the city of Yuba City's, you know, purview. And when we are bringing these projects to you, it's like, well, you know, these kind of go hand in hand, but these are two different, you know, uh, projects. And, you know, I think they, they should be seen as, as such.
Through the mayor?
Sir?
Um, they, you keep dropping the term affordable housing. $11 million in 29 units. I just did the math. It's $379,000 for how big of a unit? Thousand square feet, maybe?
Yeah.
You're, you're approaching, you're approaching custom home costs here. Where is that affordable? It's not affordable. It's subsidized.
So through the grants that are provided, one of the things that we have to deal with in the state of California is prevailing wage.
Absolutely.
So it's really, that, that's something that's not through our control. And because the grant is done as a grant, it, it isn't something that is, you know, that we're going to have a loan on, which allows the cost to decrease. So it's going to be grant money used to cover the project, but it's done at prevailing wage. We're not, you know, to, to be honest, we're not fans of the cost of prevailing wage. We wish there were ways where they didn't have to be used on projects because when we build homes, uh, we can build them for less, but that's the money that's available through the state to be able to do these projects, to be able to meet the need. Um, you know, we have, just talking about seniors, we have like 400, I believe, over 400 seniors who don't have a place to go. And, and the concern isn't just about, you know, those elements. It's that we have hundreds of seniors who are in their 60s, 70s and 80s, who we definitely don't want to end up having homeless on the streets because they don't have a place that they can afford to live because they're living off of social security, which is maybe 11 to 1300 a month for them. And that's sometimes higher, less than their rent cost. So that's part of the need for, as you mentioned, you know, knowing that there's a need in the city to be able to do these. So, you know, it's not fun to have to pay that price, but it's state funding that's a grant. They require prevailing wage, so we don't have a way around, um, dealing with those costs. We still build a lot less than we think, uh, we see in many other states, or sorry, many other counties, but it's still expensive with utilizing prevailing wage.
More for the Habitat group. So, you know, this came to us on a pretty tight deadline. This came to us on a pretty tight deadline before, and apparently there was an extension. What is the, what is the, the deadline for some, for some action from this city council?
Yeah, so they're, they're looking at receiving, um, said document by November 10th. Um, so that's the deadline that they provided us.
Okay, with, with that, you know, there, there was a, you know, obviously, um, we get this information and we review it. Uh, our city attorney provides us with, uh, uh, legal research on the item. And initially, um, the concerns about giving up site control are the ones that you've already heard. I'm not going to re, rehash those here. I, I agree with those. Is this like, you know, I, I don't, I want to see the project go forward and I don't mind considering conditional site control. I guess the question I would have is apparently based upon what has already been submitted, there were, there were legal concerns about, uh, our ability to retreat from that should, should something happen that we need to. And I think that's a concern I've heard, uh, across the board up here. I, I understand the time constraint, but that's not my time constraint. And, you know, I think, I think we've been very, very clear here. One thing that we don't want to do is don't make your crisis my crisis. Uh, I want to see this project go, but I need something that's conditional site control that does not hamstring me and, and put us in a position where, um, where we're at a disadvantage should the unthinkable happen. I, I, I'm very familiar with grants. I know you're leveraging grants. I'm hopeful we participated with that. I want to see that all happen. Um, you know, I, I, I can't speak for my fellow council people. I'm sure we could have a special meeting if we needed to or so, or so chose. But from what I've been given at this particular point in time is the site control letter that I believe that you're desirous of is not something I'm comfortable in, in approving.
Mr. City Attorney?
Is there a recommended? Oh, sorry.
Mr. City Attorney, are you familiar with the, what we've learned today, this conditional site control process?
Where I am struggling is HUD's letter, which is undated, we don't know how long it's been received, says that they need to have site control without impositions of additional conditions or restrictions.
Right.
And then we're talking about conditional, putting conditions on the site control. So I am not clear from at least my perspective, one, whether or not that meets HUD's requirements in the first place. Two, if we could wind back the clock, maybe a better way of perhaps resolving this and resolving the council members' concerns is when the exclusive negotiation agreement was done back in February of this year. If we had any sort of development agreement that had been put into place in the intervening nine months, that could have set out the site control. That may have given city council some more confidence as to the exact terms that would be in that DDA. Uh, unfortunately, we're not in that position right now. I, I don't know, Diana, do you have any additional thoughts? I, because the more conditions that we put on this letter regarding site control makes it less likely that HUD will say, well, you're not supposed to put additional conditions or restrictions. And that assumes that the council wants to move forward with giving up site control of city property for a project at this point in the process without a DDA.
I do have another thought and that is, um, with the home program. Um, Brian, you said that the NOFA comes out and then the applications are due in February. What's the timeframe for award for that?
Yeah, I would assume by April or May of next year, uh, would probably be when we start getting the spring letters back.
Okay. Because, um, the, the HUD grant, the home grant, both of those grants would have certain requirements for construction. They'd have timeframe and that, that's part of what the issue is, is we don't know what the strings are going to be attached with those grants if they're awarded or the timeframes that they have for construction and if that's going to fit with our timeframe for construction. And so, you know, I think one of council's, um, concerns is tying this property up for, you know, an unknown amount of time at this point in time without having the ability, you know, what's our off ramp? If at some point too long's too long, what is our off ramp to be able to get out of it and to be able to say, okay, we're submitting to HCD that we've tried to negotiate, we can't come to terms, we want approval that we've complied with the surplus land act so that we can then sell the property on the open market. Yeah, I don't know if there's a scenario that works for Habitat that allows that off ramp language to be in place, or if there's language that the council would be, um, you know, agreeable to. Again, with the timeframe of having to have this submitted by November 10th, that doesn't give us a lot of time to work through these details and there's a lot of unknowns. Uh, if, if council, even if I were to say we could schedule a special meeting, it would have to be by Friday to do the special meeting to comply with HUD's extension that they've already granted us. And so, you know, for the Habitat team with the home grant, you know, if, let's say that those stars align and this, this HUD grant comes through, the home grant comes through, realistically, what would be the timeframe for construction of this project?
Yeah, so we would say, because there's also some, some, um, planning items we'd have to go through as well, right? So going through playing department, building department. So if we were stars aligned, everything is, you know, HUD should be an ideal scenario. We should be able to start within summer of 25. That's our timeline now with a 16 to 17 month construction period, which will put us at the latter half of, you know, 2026 going into 2027. So that's our, that's our timeline for construction. Um, I, I do want to mention this letter that we're discussing today, it does have the contingency for necessary approval action. So today we're not deciding on the site control piece. It's more so obviously on the letter, which we discussed already, but there's an understanding with HUD that even with this letter, there may be some necessary approvals that still need to occur, which is the conversations through the council and through other bodies as well. So, um, I think that that also allows, you know, a little more assurance for council to know that there isn't like strong language that has to happen today. There will still be ongoing conversations, um, that follow, uh, before this actual conveyance of the site.
All right, yeah, yeah. That makes, that makes sense. You know, some of the stuff I've struggled with, I'm kind of going backwards a little bit. I do join my colleagues in the desire of hoping that these, both of these projects do go through. But I gotta tell you, when we have eight or nine months to get a DDA in place and now we're, now we're staring down the barrel of days to make a significant decision that might, that we're clearly not super comfortable with, that could potentially put the city in a bad position, um, it's a, it's an issue. Uh, with an undated letter, giving us 72 hours to make a decision, that's, that's kind of a red flag. Um, before I forget, do we have any public comment on the item? Nothing? Okay. Unless anybody else has anything further, we can come back for, um, decision. Action or no action? Just confirming, no comment, sir? No comment, sir? Sir?
I wish there was an off ramp there.
I do too.
Again, we're up against a deadline and this seems to happen a little bit too frequently for my comfort level. You know, I, I tried to be nimble and, but this is rugged.
It's a tough, it's a tough way, place to be in, but that's just not, we not comfortable doing business when we're pushed into a corner like that. Sir? Confirming? Okay, so will the item will, what results from this, uh, is just, we just let the E and A write itself out?
So at this point, you're, you've considered the request and you are using not to provide a site control letter?
Right. There we go.
Through the council, so what that means is your current exclusive negotiation contract or agreement remains in place to the duration of the agreement. If Habitat can meet any requirements and get together a, a DDA and negotiate with the city before it expires, then we can put together a DDA and proceed forward with the city and that DDA will come back to the city council for approval. If Habitat, after it's of course been approved by the state of California, a lot of governmental entities involved here. However, if Habitat, uh, finds that the project is not viable for any reason, it can withdraw its, uh, offer to purchase under the surplus land act. And then it becomes a property that can go to the open market and there is nothing to stop the city council from selling it to Habitat under the regular process without having to have state approval.
And that's in line with what we've read in the staff report as well. That is, um, an unfortunate way to have to do it, but it is one that makes the most sense in the bigger picture as far as exposure for the city, in my opinion, and apparently the rest of us as well, so.
I would also offer that the Habitat team could go back to HUD to look for a further extension to allow more time for the city to, um, establish, if there are terms, that would be agreeable for any type of site control letter.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right. That will move on to item number nine, future agenda items. We do have, do have one written down, follow up with the, uh, public comment time for the, uh, regarding progress on the lighted home on Tabor Avenue. Is there anything else we'd like to bring up? All right. Reports and communications, city manager.
All right, thank you. Um, so this afternoon we had the groundbreaking for a new barn at Sutter Animal Services Authority. And, um, so the Friends of SASSA who raised the money for that barn, you know, what a huge accomplishment. And I know that SASSA staff are very appreciative and once the barn's constructed, we will have a ribbon cutting and a celebration to acknowledge their, um, contributions. And then, um, again, the senior resource fair is this Thursday. If you've If you've never been, it's impressive in terms of the number of resources that are available. And it's great job to the folks that put that on, because it's really an asset to our community. And then Monday with Veterans Day, you know, thank you to all those that have served our country. And City Hall will be closed on Monday. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boomgard.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a chance to attend the Nagarkurtan event on Sunday. I'm sorry, I missed Friday. I know that we had representation. I sympathize with Mr. Piarra-Joel, because I walked from my house over to the temple and walked through the very orchards that he was talking about. In fact, I think I sent all of you a picture of some of the vehicles that were mired in the mud. My concern is, is a lot of what he's talking about, it takes place in the county. And so the other thing that I've got some very nice comments about the efforts that we took, especially over there off True Road in Quail Point, which I've, you know, been passing on to staff. So thank the two, Mayor Harris and Vice Mayor Shaw for their efforts working with the temple on some of the traffic plan. That seemed to work well. One thing that I think we need to carry forward, that I did get quite a few comments about was, and again, we'll have to work with our Sutter County partners, is the sound system on Sunday morning started around 5:00 AM. And I live, as a crow flies, about two miles away, and I could hear it, and I began to get texts and emails about what the heck was going on over there. So, you know, obviously, if you know the temple resides in the county, so that would be one thing that perhaps in an after-action report, we can ask, because that was not something that, at least, I had encountered before. But I think our efforts in working with temple leadership have produced a better event, and I think there's still room for some improvement, and we'll continue to pursue that. But a lot of people, you know, it's a great event for the community. I thank the police department, I thank the fire department, I see the chief there, and the rest of the city staff. I know they did a bunch of work just to be able to accommodate the rain and get some parking. The other thing I wanted to report out on, I covered the SACOG meeting for Mayor Harris. The, one of the things that I've sort of mentioned before, because I was on one of the SACOG funding groups, was this new funding mechanism for both state and federal funding. The SACOG board approved that funding mechanism. So there are new guidelines that are coming out. A lot of them would be a lot for me to report on here. But they are designed to be at least, what's the right word, fair to all the entities that are involved in all the counties. So that, look forward to that. And I would mention, if I haven't already, that I think some of those funding requests will start in February. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we last met, the mayor, the vice mayor, and I attended League of Cities down in Long Beach, and I think we came back with some great ideas that we could implement for our city. Transit was canceled. I did participate with Mr. Boyer in the interview for the position of lieutenant, lieutenants, for the county of Sutter County. We had some great applicants for that. And I think he enjoyed it. You enjoyed it, right? It looked like you had a good time. And lastly, I briefly attended the parade this weekend. I got, my one takeaway is, I think the FAA is really patient, because that, the helicopter was buzzing the crowd pretty good. But other than that, that's all I got.
All right. Very good. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 22nd of October, attended the new badging of some of our new people in the police department. Did two interviews with 93Q with mayor and vice mayor. Did the DBA crossing guard for Halloween. What a rodeo that was. It was quite, it was really well-attended, the Halloween Downtown Business Association Halloween Party. It was really well-attended. A lot of crazy drivers out there, and I'm lucky I'm still here. Bingo Senior Center on Friday. What a, big crowd. I was really surprised at how big the crowd is. Seating is at a premium, if you ever want to go to the bingo. And I don't understand all those crazy games, but I had a good time. No, I wasn't even close. Went to the SASSA Barn groundbreaking. Great job those people did. My first question to them, what's on your wish list? And they really didn't have any, other than maybe some shading for some of the pins that they were talking about. Great group, a lot of hard work to get that up and going. They said they'd been working on it for 20 years. Went to the Yuba-Sutter Economic Development Corporation meeting on Monday morning. And to say the least, Beal Air Force Base, when BRAC comes back around again, is probably the lowest-hanging fruit there is. And it's a reality that we all have to be faced with, that there's a possibility that Beal could go away. And I personally think maybe we ought to be thinking of alternatives, what could be there. It's that serious. I mean, it didn't come from the Air Force or any, from any military. But the gentleman, Joe, I believe his name is, from Grumman, Northrop Grumman, painted a very, very clear picture for all of us there. So with that, I conclude my report.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. I want to keep mine very brief, because I know we're all interested in what's happening in about 20 minutes. I had the opportunity to...
Two.
Have two?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Had the opportunity to attend the League of California Cities with these two guys. We had a lot of fun. We brought back a lot of information. Is that concise enough? Also, had the great honor and opportunity to go out to the Seek Temple on Friday night and greet and welcome everyone on behalf of our city and the council to our city. And like Mark said, we're getting a lot of good feedback. We can always build upon this. And this next year, we've already spoken, and we're going to be looking at starting in January, hopefully, to prepare for next year. So with that, I'll leave it at that.
I'm really glad that we got that ad hoc committee started early. I think that definitely was beneficial, if nothing else, for the communication. We have the relationships built for the best practices moving forward. So I think mission accomplished overall in that regard. As already stated, these two gentlemen and I attended Cal Cities. I had a, attended a meeting on the effects of minimum wage to minority communities, homelessness issues. Also talked at length with some folks in the, what's it called, the exhibit hall, solar lighting projects, and also some tiny home options that I'm sure Vice Mayor will have an opportunity to bring up. Did the 93Q interview monthly, which is always a good time to get in, talking with those folks and getting things out. The SASSA meeting, overall status report on SASSA, and then, of course, also attended the barn ribbon-cutting today. Were very much-needed and much-deserved piece of equipment and infrastructure for those folks to get their job done. They do a really good job. Dedicated individuals out there. The, attended a ribbon-cutting with Vice Mayor at a new business called Sam's Arena down on Burns Drive, which is an indoor soccer field. It was very well-attended by folks of all ages. And also the Pink Box Social. They had their ribbon-cutting at the Chamber of Commerce offices, which is basically a mobile catering business that will bring like a charcuterie trailer to your event. They even do custom trucker hats and a few other things to kind of add for a fun time. So appreciate those folks reaching out and opening up a business, a small business, and then hopefully they'll thrive. Waffle Windsney was wonderful. I don't, I haven't been able to attend many of them this year, but I did attend this last time, and as always, well-attended, and was enjoyable. So thank you guys very much for all that hard work. And then I spent a lot of time in this last weekend in Utah, visiting my family. And I want to thank you, gentlemen, for participation, being active in the Seek Parade events. It's a major, a major thing goes on, and there's always issues. Mr. Piarra-Joel mentioned something that's very valid. It would be nice to be able to work with the community and folks to try to, I'm sure he's probably not even the only one that had some concerns. I've got two messages I need to return calls tomorrow. I'm not sure what they were, but it's important that they, folks, I think, for everything, they feel comfortable enough to call us and reach out, so we can hear and be able to listen and fix things, including Ms. Macy, who's not here today. So I'm glad she has taken an active role in trying to get things resolved, because that, she doesn't deserve that. Other than that, hopefully, we'll see some of you at the Resource Fair on Thursday at 9:00 AM. All right? Until next time. Thank you.